Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Chatham Select Board meeting of July 26, 2022. Let the record show that the meeting started promptly at 5:30 p.m. pursuant to Governor Baker's July 16, 2022 signing of an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, including the extension of his March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Lyles Chapter 30A, Section 20, until March 31, 2023. This meeting of the Chatham Select Board is being conducted via in-person and remote participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in that order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by calling the phone number 1-508-945-4410, conference ID 203-386-491, or join the meeting online via Microsoft Teams through the link in the posted agenda. While this is a live broadcast and simulcast on Channel 18, despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide for real-time access. And we will post a meeting, a record of this meeting, excuse me, on the town's website as soon as possible. And note that the order was extended to 23, March 23. Anyway, our first item of business is a roll call for the board. Mr. Castro, are you here?
Present.
Ms. Davis?
Present.
Mr. Shell?
Present.
And Mr. Metters?
Present.
And the chair here, Mr. Dykens is president as well. The first order of business, who will look at the minutes or adopt the minutes of July 12, 2022, and a motion to approve, please.
Motion to approve.
And a second.
Second.
Thank you so much. Any edits? I see Mr. Castro's hand up, and then Mr. Shell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have three. First, on page two, under Public Announcements and Agenda Item Requests, I have several edits here. In the first line at the end where it says, "Open Meeting Law Decision Hosted in the Cape Cod Chronicle," it should say "Reported" in the Cape Cod Chronicle. And then in the third line begins, which begins, which specified that the item being discussed, that should be plural items. And then at the end where it says, "In Reliance of Town Council," it should say, "In Reliance on the Advice of Town Council." In reliance on the advice of Town Council. And then in the last sentence, it should say, "Executive Session Minutes and," and I would strike the rest of it and substitute, "And Requested a Quarterly Agenda Item for the Board to Review Them, Comma, Beginning in September." I'll repeat that. "Requested a Quarterly Agenda Item for the Board to Review Them, Comma, Beginning in September." And then in the next paragraph where it refers to the Railroad Museum Group's luncheon, I would like to insert the word "annual." And then on page three, right in the middle, the sentence that reads, "The Board questioned the warranty extension and had noted that prior discussion had introduced the idea of," I would strike the phrase "introduced the idea of" and substitute the word "indicated." Discussion had indicated a brand-new unit would be provided by the seller instead of keeping the refurbished vessel. So it would read, "Discussion had indicated a brand-new unit would be provided by the seller instead of keeping the refurbished vessel." And finally, on page five, fourth paragraph, which begins, "Ms. Goldstein shared the electrical connection," in the last line of that, where the word "completed," I think it should mean, it should read "commenced." "She hoped to have it commenced within the next calendar year." I think that's what she said. Those are my edits. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Castro. Mr. Shell?
I just have one on page four. And under the Eversource Update, the second paragraph that begins, "Ronet Goldstein, Eversource Community," and the fourth line begins, "Explain that Chatham's telephone poles are," I believe she said, "owned and serviced by Verizon."
That's right. Yep. Good. Thank you, Mr. Shell. Any other comments? Hearing and seeing none, the minutes have been moved and seconded. Mr. Metters?
Aye.
Yeah, Mr. Shell?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Castro?
Aye.
And the chair says aye as well. Thank you very much. Next item are announcements and agenda item requests. I think we have some introductions in there as well. Joe, would you like to introduce? Leah?
Great. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So as the board might recall, I had filed an administrative order, Administrative Order Number Five, to create a Department of Community Services. And I'm really excited to introduce the first Director of Community Services, Leah Lacrosse, and I'd ask if she can come to the podium. Leah is on her seventh day with the town, so she just started last week, and phenomenal background in nonprofit, human services, and serving constituents of all ages. And also, a real dedication to philanthropy and volunteerism. And I just wanted to note a couple of areas that she's been involved with, which is her volunteerism. So she had served, I think, until recently as the president of the Harwich Dennis Rotary Club. She's been a volunteer for Habitat for Humanity, the Harwich Food, Family Food Pantry, and Faith Family Kitchen. And she's also been a member of the Town of Dennis Fire Station Building Committee. So a lot of various and varying experience, and I'm really proud to have her with us. So Leah, would you mind just having introduction and saying a few words about yourself? Thank you.
Sure. Thank you so much for that, Joe. Good evening, everybody. As Jill said, I'm the new Director of Community Services for the Town of Chatham. So proud to be the very first one. My leadership background is, as Jill said, mostly in serving the underserved and program development and administration in the nonprofit world. My, that's my, for my business life, my personal life. My husband has been a, married to my husb-- (laugh) my husband has been a Dennis firefighter for the past 30 years. I have three grown children, expecting my first grandchild in a matter of weeks. And again, as Jill indicated, community service is very important to me as well, and serving my own community as well as all of the Cape in any way I can. I am so excited to be here, and I'm sure that we will be working together on multiple projects, and I really look forward to that. And I look forward to doing a great job for Jill and the town. So thank you so much.
Well, thank you, Leah, and welcome, and congratulations on the grandchild. It's great.
Thank you.
All sorts of fun. And yes, we will be working closely together as we move forward.
Yes, we will.
Welcome, welcome.
Thank you so much.
Best of luck. Any other comments for Leah?
Mr. Chair, just a note, so Leah will be located at the Council on Aging at Stony Hill Road, and she's overseeing the umbrella organization as community services, but includes recreation beaches and senior services as well as human services. So welcome, Leah. Thank you.
Any other introductions, Jill, this evening? Anybody else? Okay. Any agenda item, any announcements? Yes, please, sir. Please come forward. Make sure that microphone is green. Press the button.
Thank you, and good evening, everyone. My name is Gary Tennyson, and I'm here representing the Town's Community Preservation Committee, which I now chair. And we have two announcements about the operations of the committee. The first is that we've moved up the deadline for applications coming into the committee for consideration, projects for consideration for CPA funding. We've moved it to November 1st. That's in order to provide the committee with adequate time to do a thorough review, to meet with all of the applicants, discuss the projects with them, oftentimes to ask for additional information, and sometimes to deal with contingencies. For example, last year, we needed a legal opinion as to whether or not one of the applications met the requirements of the CPA Act. And all of that takes time. And the staff, the town staff that works with the committee also needs time to prepare drafts of the warrant items for each of the projects that we expect to move forward, and to bring them before the Select Board for your vote, to bring them before the Finance Committee for their vote, and to finally get them into the warrant for the town meeting in May. And there just wasn't enough time with the old deadline, which was January 15th, to do that in a non-rushed format. And so we decided to move the deadline up to November 1st, which I might add is consistent with most other towns on the Cape. For example, Harwich has October 1st. There are three other towns that have November 1st as the deadline. No town, other than Chatham, had one that was into the New Year. So we think we can do a better job by having the deadline be November 1st. The second announcement is that the committee will be holding its annual public hearing on September 19 at 4:00 p.m. at the Community Center. This is an opportunity for any resident, any citizen of Chatham, to come in and to meet with the committee, to discuss any issues that they might have about how the committee is operating and those decisions they're making, to offer suggestions of priorities that they think the committee ought to be giving to our deliberations, and to ask any questions as to whether their project meets the criteria for CPA funding. It's just an open information sharing session that we think will be useful, and we hope that many of the residents of Chatham will come in and join us and have a productive discussion. So those are the two announcements, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tennyson. Any questions or comments? Okay. Any towns have the deadline December 1st?
Yes, they do. I don't know right off the, my hat, head, what they are, but there are, there are towns that do have December 1st. I think there's one that has this November 23rd, just before Thanksgiving. And considering that the date, we thought about December, the end of the year, but then you get into the holidays. In addition to that, you know, the funding doesn't really become available until July 1st anyways. So it's not like people are going to be waiting longer for their funds to become available. It's just in order to get those applications in at an earlier date so we have time to deal with the applicants in a more productive format.
Well, I think it'd be interesting to see how we do with November 1st.
Yeah, I agree.
I think it was January 15th, and you changed it by two and a half months. That's considerable.
Yeah.
So I just, I think, I think you really want to make sure everybody knows that it's November 1st.
Yep. That's why I'm here.
Yeah, get your applications in. Okay.
All right. And we also, we also had an announcement in the Chronicle.
Super.
Last Friday.
Super. Thank you, Mr. Tennyson.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay. Any other announcements? Okay. Any agenda item requests on the part of the board? Mr. Metters, yeah?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. No, I think it'd just be a benefit to the board if, in the next meeting or two, we could get an update on the Fishman Storage Area, I guess, transition. I spoke with some of the staff, and I know there's some potential permitting issues that may create a delay of some sort. So I think it would be, we get an update on where things stand, and if there's anything else we need to discuss, you know, that would be relevant to that conversation.
Super. Thank you, Corey. Anybody else? Agenda items? Anybody in the publics, either here or online, that has an agenda item request this evening? Okay. Hearing and seeing none, we'll go on to our, we have a public hearing this evening to consider the application for a change of hours. Backpack Forever LLC, doing business as, more popularly known as Mom &amp; Pops, 1603 Main Street, Mr. Tom Deegan. I don't know if Mr. Deegan is here and/or online. Shawna, do you have any insight on this one? I'm sorry. The clerk needs to read this public announcement. Mr. Shell, I jumped the gun here. You have to formally convene the public hearing.
Notices hereby given that the Chatham Select Board will hear, will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, July 26, 2022, at 5:30 p.m. in the large meeting room at the Town Hall Annex, 261 George Rider Road, to consider an application for extension of operating hours for an annual restaurant license for all alcoholic beverages from Backpack Forever LLC, doing business as Mom &amp; Pops, 1603 Main Street, Chatham, Massachusetts. All interested parties are encouraged to participate.
Thank you, Mr. Shell, and thank you for the reminder, Mr. Metters. And off to Shawna.
Yes, thank you. This is actually a very standard request. The Mom &amp; Pops had already requested and was granted extended Sunday hours back in 2018 to 11:00 a.m. when they, when they were starting to serve lunch. They're now serving breakfast, so they wanted to extend their hours to all that are allowable, which would be 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m. on Monday through Saturday, and 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m. on Sundays.
Yep. Thank you, Shawna. Questions or comments? Mr. Castro?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Shawna, this 1:00 a.m. closing, do we have any other enterprises in town that have that closing?
That's the latest closing time allowed in town.
Okay. All right. That just seemed rather out there for.
Whether or not they will actually operate until 1:00 a.m. is.
But their license is to say 1:00 a.m. The suggested motion doesn't have any, it doesn't recite anything about closing hours. Just talks about early opening.
Right. Because 1:00 a.m. is the latest allowable in town.
So we don't need to recite that?
No.
Have we heard any concerns from anybody? This is a public hearing, so I assume the chair will ask, but.
I've not received any comments.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Castro. So now that Dean has reminded me to ask the public for comment, are there any comments about this item before the public this evening? This is a public hearing. Online, any comments about this change in hours for Mom &amp; Pops? Okay. Hearing and seeing none, I'll entertain a motion, folks. Mr. Shell?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the request to extend opening hours on the annual on-premise liquor license for Backpack Forever LLC, doing business as Mom &amp; Pops, to 8:00 a.m. Monday through Saturday and 10:00 a.m. on Sundays.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Castro?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Shell?
Aye.
Mr. Metters?
Aye.
And the chair says aye as well. Thank you very much, Shawna, and good luck to Mom &amp; Pops. Okay. The next item is public comments on our business agenda. The business agenda this evening includes a request to use town roads for the Turkey Trot. This is an annual request. A special one-day alcohol permit for Chatham Threadworks on August 15th. An informational item on the reclassification of Mill Pond, Little Mill Pond, Vettelford Landing, Stage Harbor, Mitchell River, Oyster River North, and Oyster River South mooring area, and Renee is going to enlighten us there. And we have some appointments, and then the town manager report as well. So are there any comments from the public on our forthcoming business agenda this evening? Hearing and seeing none. The first item is to consider a request for the use of the roads for the Turkey Trot. Kathleen Whibley. Hi, Kathleen, how are you this evening?
Great, thank you.
Great. Let's make sure the green button's on.
Sure is.
Okay.
Katie Whibley, I'm the CEO at Lower Cape Outreach Council. Thanks for giving me an opportunity to address all of you today. I am here to request use of the roads for the Turkey Trot. I'm sure most of you are aware, it's been virtual for the past two years. It's also been managed by a separate nonprofit, but always benefited Lower Cape Outreach Council. In talks with the original founders of the event, they've decided to disband their nonprofit and retire, and they have transferred the management of the race over to Lower Cape Outreach Council. So this will be the first year running it. I don't intend on doing too many major changes. I have been in touch with Lieutenant Goddard and have secured a detail, as usual, for the race. So I am here to request use of the roads, as we would like a safe run by closing the roads for the race.
Mr. Chair?
Yes. Ms. Davis?
This is an annual thing, and we're really proud to Chatham to host this. So I move to approve the use of town roads for the 18th Annual Turkey Trot, to be held on Thursday, November 24, 2022, at 8:00 a.m.
Second.
Thank you. I do have a comment before we take a vote. I just want to acknowledge the folks that started this, Linda Redding and Mary Parsons from the Unitarian Church, and they, they're stepping back, but they've done such a great job over the years, so we thank them. They've done a great job.
We as well. They did a wonderful job, and Linda and Mary have both been very helpful in the transition, so.
Super duper. Thank you. Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Mr. Metters, what say you?
Aye.
Mr. Shell?
Enthusiastically, aye.
Yep. Ms. Davis?
Aye.
And Mr. Castro?
Aye.
And enthusiastically as well, the chair says aye. Good luck, have fun.
Thank you very much.
Raise a lot of money, a lot of food.
I hope so.
Okay. Next item is a special one-day alcohol permit for Chatham Threadworks, August 15, 2022, 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. Jen Falvey, I don't know if she's online. I know Jen, and if not, then Shawna, maybe you can brief us. Doesn't look like anything too crazy.
Sure. The board has previously approved, I believe, five other special one-day permits for Chatham Threadworks throughout the summer months. This would be the sixth of the 10 allowable to them through the year.
Super. Thanks, Shawna. Yes, Mr. Shell?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the special one-day alcohol permits for wine and malt beverages only to Jen Falvey as a representative of Chatham Threadworks for service at 400 Main Street, Unit 3, on Monday, August 15, 2022, from 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m.
Thank you, Mr. Shell. Second. Thank you, Mr. Castro. Any discussion? Mr. Castro, what say you?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Shell?
Aye.
Mr. Metters?
Aye.
And the chair says aye as well. Have fun. Good luck. Okay. Renee Gagne, we have an informational item of, I think, of some interest on the reclassification by the state of our, some of our shellfish areas in town. So Renee, take it away.
Yes, thank you. To the Select Board, as my agenda report stated, this is just an informational session to update you on some of the changes in the shellfish world that may affect the future of shellfish harvest in Chatham and some of the areas in town. As the Select Board, you are actually the ultimate authority over local management of shellfish. I act as your agent, but there are numerous levels of oversight for shellfish management because this is a food product. It's a food product that is shipped overstate. It's a food product shipped internationally. It's primarily eaten raw. And unlike most animal products, you were eating the whole animal. I don't want to distract or just deter people from eating shellfish, but that's why there are numerous layers of oversight, because there are increased risks to eating raw shellfish. And just a little bit of history, this oversight was established because of a huge typhoid outbreak in 1925, where the primary vector was the consumption of raw oysters. So it was really the coastal states that asked the federal government to be involved. And since that time, the federal government has been involved. It's a cooperative program, and it was established at that time, and it's called the National Shellfish Sanitation Program, the NSSP. And that's really the overriding umbrella for all shellfish management. Their primary concern, certainly over time and up till recently, has been that the safe harvesting, the waters, the safe harvest of shellfish in water. So mostly, they've been concerned with the water quality. And our water quality standard is based on fecal coliform. It's a bacteria. And they developed a classification program. I should step back and say that through the NSSP was developed best management practices by which all of the states need to adopt. The federal government has no authority to regulate, but if the states do not comply, they have a very big stick because they control interstate commerce. So states are forced to comply. And so through this development, they developed a classification program set by water standards, and there are five classifications. The Town of Chatham has three classifications. That's approved, conditionally approved, and prohibited. Most of Chatham waters are in the approved classification. That means our waters meet the minimum standard for shellfish harvesting. Those are our areas in Stage Harbor, Ryder's Cove, Crow's Pond, and it's primarily location. We have great flushing. We're close to the North Atlantic, and so we stay in, we've had excellent water quality throughout the years. Then we have our conditionally approved areas. Those are the areas that we close periodically due to the potential of water quality issues like Mill Creek, Bucks Creek, et cetera, and its bacteria increases in warm waters, and those areas don't flush quite as well as places like Stage Harbor. So we close them at certain times of the year when there's potential for increased bacteria. Then we also have prohibited areas, and those are the areas that do not meet the minimum standard at any part of the year. That's Frostfish Creek and the west side of Muddy Creek. And those are the standards that we've been abiding by for years. Over the last couple of years, the FDA has been more concerned with potential pollution sources. And one of the main pollution sources they're concerned with are boats. And so over the last few years, they've adopted a language in the model ordinance, which is the best management practices by which the states need to comply with. And those were adopted during COVID. They had numerous Zoom meetings, and so a lot of us were blindsided by this new language that was adopted. So at minimum, we need, we needed to change the classifications of certain areas in our, in the waters that have, again, have been, met all of those minimum standards in Stage Harbors that have 20 or more moorings. So over the last year, our area biologists and myself have taken a look at the different mooring fields and really tried to compact them as minimally as possible to keep most of the waters open or in the approved classification, and then reclassify those areas around tight mooring fields and reclassify them as conditionally approved. Now, within a conditionally approved classification, you have two statuses. You have the open status and the closed status. Like Mill Creek, we closed that because of the potential of bacteria. We're leaving these currently reclassified areas, and along with your packet came along the notification from the state of the reclassification. It also shows the maps that we worked on, and you can see that this has nothing to do with Stewart's mooring field map. We tried to, as I get, as I said, tighten them up. And so those areas have been reclassified, but we're still keeping them in the approved status because we believe we have the justification for that. If you read the language that I also attached with the, within the new model ordinance, there are, there is potential to justify keeping some of these areas in the open, open status on a year-round basis. And we believe we can do that, but that will be, we will, we will find out soon enough if that's the case. So currently, the areas that you receive notification from Division Marine Fisheries, along with those maps, those areas have been reclassified. The Select Board does not have to act on those because we are keeping them in the open status on a year-round basis. But as I also mentioned in the report, we will be having a visit by FDA agents sometime during the week of August 7. And they do periodic checks on all state. And they do periodic checks on all states to see if they're complying with the Model Ordinance. And for this visit, they will be specifically looking to see if the state is complying with these, the new language for mooring fields. So we will have the opportunity to speak with them, and we hope, again, that our justification meets their standards. We will not know until they create their own report and then return that to the Division of Marine Fisheries. They don't really interact with the local authorities because Massachusetts is one of the only states that has home rule by which each coastal community can manage their shellfish. Mostly, it's on a state-to-federal exchange. So we will only hear through the Division of Marine Fisheries. And we're hoping the justification, as I said, meets their standards, but they will be coming here looking for violations. That's what they're going to do. And more than likely, our mooring fields will not pass the sniff test. So we're hoping, and we're going to encourage, that the state actually will fight for us. And again, I don't want to foresee, but the implications are, the handwriting is on the wall. So we're, our fingers crossed, maybe it'll come through, but for the most part, I think that we need to be prepared.
Okay, Renee. Excellent summary. Memo was excellent as well. I'll turn it over to the board. I'm sure there's questions and comments, and I have some as well, but I'll turn to the board first. Mr. Castro, and then Ms. Davis, and then Cora.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Renee. I just had two questions. So if they come in in August and determine that these should not be considered conditionally approved, what will they reclassify them as, closed?
They will, the classification is correct. So they've been reclassified as conditionally approved. It's whether they will want to see them in the closed status during the boating season.
Okay.
So they've already been reclassified.
Okay. What's the economic impact if they do that, if they reach that conclusion?
That's something that we'll have to determine. Again, we try to rein in where these area, mooring areas are, and there is other language within that, within the Model Ordinance that refers to adjacent waters. And we're hoping that we can keep our, at least our intertidal area within the adjacent water interpretation. Again, those are things that we just, we're just not going to know until after our visit.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Davis? Ms. Davis?
Renee, I've been following this for a while, and I know during the MSI, we had conversations about the organization that was working on this and where it might be coming from in a bigger picture of what's going on with shellfisheries in the United States. But what I wanted to find out is, what, the bull rig fisheries will be the one that's most impacted by this, if those areas were closed down. Am I correct?
Right. And it is an if.
It is an if.
But if we, again, by reining in those areas and having to just close those areas, they would be the ones that would be impacted seasonally.
Okay. So we have best practices for, you know, mooring regulations that speak to boats that are moored, and, you know, if they have any onboard living, they need to have self-contained, you know, facilities there that they're pumped out regularly. We have no discharge zones in the harbor as well as Nantucket Sound. You can only discharge in federal waters. So I imagine our water quality here, I mean, we, I think we've done a lot with our sewer treatment, you know, our sewer-ing the community and things like that. I mean, I think we have a good, we have a good product in Chatham. We're one of the only wild shellfisheries on, you know, one of the biggest, two wild shellfisheries in Massachusetts. Am I correct?
I'm going to reiterate, we meet the minimum standards at every sample testing. I mean, our water quality is not of question. It's potential pollution sources. And we do have some things in our back pocket that we can potentially work with. Again, we need to wait to see what the report from FDA is going to be, but...
How's the state handling this in regard to, because we're kind of like the first, are we not the first test case?
We will be the test case, and we're the test case, again, because of our water quality, because we meet the standards at every water sample. It's hard to get a read. I certainly have contacts at DMF and folks that are great supporters of the program and have a real understanding of the reality, but it's hard to say how hard people are going to push because there are other types of industries, shellfish industries in the state, that will not be impacted. So whether, it's just, it's a hard read, Shereen. Sorry.
I understand it all, Renee. No more questions.
Thank you, Shereen.
Renee, thank you very much for the update. No, I mean, this goes without being said, but I think it's going to be important that, you know, we all keep communication with each other. There could be a lot of things that are going to happen quickly, potentially. And, you know, you feel free to ask the board what we need to discuss, take action on, or consider, because I think these are going to happen quickly, and there's a lot of unknowns out there. And I know you've got some thoughts in the back of your mind about if it goes in this path or this path. So as long as we keep open communication, I think we're going to be best prepared to tackle this, but let's just keep the communication open, be ready for the unexpected, I guess. Thank you.
Thank you.
And that's really what I wanted to prepare the Select Board about.
Yes, Mr. Shell.
I just have one question. Do I understand correctly that we're not permitted to observe as they conduct this inspection process beginning the week of August 7?
No. I actually, myself and our area biologist will be taking the federal agents out, water sampling. That occurred in Wellfleet when they were doing Vibrio, a Vibrio inspection.
And does that offer you any opportunity to work the refs?
I hope so.
Okay. Thank you.
Renee, is this the FDA, does a communication post-inspection go from FDA to state to us? Does it have to run through the state first? So is there going to be a time lag on the results?
There will be a time lag no matter what because from my, from what I hear from the Division of Marine Fisheries, there's usually a number of months before they hear any feedback from the FDA. I would suspect that the DMF will contact us as soon as they hear the report or receive the report, and then we go from there.
And then in your wisdom, and I don't mean to put you on the spot, I really don't, but the most likely negative scenario would be they limit shellfishing in the summertime.
That's correct.
Yeah, okay.
They'll call it the boating season because...
Yeah, yeah. And the warmer water slash boating season or whatever.
Again, this has nothing to do with water quality. It's the amount of boats in the water, that every single one of those vessels is a potential pollution source.
Yep. And then further question, is this an annual deal, inspection event? Is it ongoing? Is it sporadic? Is it, what's the deal?
So FDA conducts these reviews every two years, and they're usually done randomly. But because of the new language that's adopted, they're really targeting certain communities for these, to see if the states are compliant with the new language that's been adopted.
Yeah, okay. Anything else for Renee? Oh, Dr. Bob, I'm sorry. Bob, you've got your hand up, please.
Yeah, thanks. I just wanted the board and the public to be aware that this isn't necessarily a new issue. We dealt with this issue back in the late 80s and early 90s when changes were made through the NSSP to the Model Ordinance. And at that time, we were able to work directly with FDA to talk about the mooring issue and the boating issue, and explain to them how mooring areas in Chatham particularly, but throughout New England, were different from areas, say, in Florida and California, you know, where you have thousands of larger boats with installed marine sanitation devices with people living them, you know, and we just had that in New England per se. So we went through this process with them. It worked out in our favor. Changes were made. Unfortunately, now, most of the people in FDA have moved on or retired. Most of the people in the state agencies have changed. So, you know, there's a lot of new people, a lot of new interpretation of the same kind of data, but, you know, we're ready to make the same kind of arguments to them that, you know, look, these are parking lot harbors, and there's a big difference in a parking lot harbor versus, you know, a marina in Southern California with 1,000 live boards on it, where pollution potentially is a major issue. So I just wanted you folks to be aware that this is not something that's absolutely new to us. We've been down this road before. We've worked it out. We've made it come out to Chatham's advantage, and hopefully with Renee's help and Stewart's help and others, we'll be successful once again. So, thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Do you get a chance to speak with them as well?
Yes. So I've been keeping in close contact with Renee, and we'll be ready to make a cogent argument.
Good. Thanks.
Yeah.
Great. Renee, thank you. Good luck.
All right. Thank you.
Keep us close.
Absolutely.
Keep us close. Thank you. Okay. The next item on our agenda this evening are committee constable appointments and reappointments as well. We have a kind of a lengthy list this evening. I was late to the interview this evening, and if it's all right with you guys for the airport, I would like to at least watch the start of that. I apologize profusely, but if that's okay with you guys.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, had you not made that comment, I was going to ask that we have an opportunity, my recommendation, we have four candidates, all of whom have things to recommend them to, or incumbents to, I thought made very impressive presentations in their interviews. I'd very much like to go back and watch all four of the interviews and give some thought to, particularly in light of the issues that are facing the Airport Commission, how we proceed. So I would endorse your suggestion. Thank you.
And the rest of the board members comfortable with that?
Fine.
For the next meeting, probably?
The next meeting. Okay. Because I have some homework to do. Okay. So the next one up is the South Coastal Harbor Plan Committee. We have one member term expiring June 30, 2022, Karen Rider.
Mr. Chair.
I'm sorry.
I move to appoint Karen Rider to the South Coastal Harbor Committee until June 30, 2025, unless sooner revoked or a successor is appointed.
Second.
Mr. Castro?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Shell?
Aye.
Mr. Metters?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. Local State Building Code Board of Appeals, a candidate for reappointment is Harry Howard. A motion, please.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I move to appoint Harry Howard to the Local State Building Code Board of Appeals unless sooner revoked or a successor is appointed.
Second.
Yeah, I think, I'm picking up on, for a term expiring June 30, 2025, unless sooner revoked or a successor is appointed.
Thank you, Mr. Shell.
Second.
And a second. Okay. Mr. Metters?
Aye.
Mr. Shell?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Castro?
Aye.
The chair says aye as well. Summer Residence Advisory Committee, we have one member term expiring June 30, 2024, one alternate term expiring June 30, 2023. And the candidate for appointment as a member is Stuart Green, which has got the endorsement of the SRAC this year. So a motion, please.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move to appoint Stuart Green to the Summer Residence Advisory Committee until June 30, 2024, unless sooner revoked or a successor is appointed.
Second.
Okay. Mr. Metters?
Aye.
Mr. Shell?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Castro?
Aye.
And the chair says aye as well. For the alternate term.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Shell, yep.
I move to appoint Jean Allen to the Summer Residence Advisory Committee as an associate until June 30, 2023, unless sooner revoked or a successor is appointed.
And a second.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Castro?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Shell?
Aye.
Mr. Metters?
Aye.
And the chair says aye as well. Committee for People with Disabilities, one member term expiring June 30, 2025, and that candidate for reappointment is Bob Hilliard. And a motion, please.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I move to appoint Rob Hilliard to the Committee for People with Disabilities until June 30, 2025, unless sooner revoked or a successor is appointed.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Metters?
Aye.
Mr. Shell?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Castro?
Aye.
And the chair says aye as well. For Constable, one member term expiring June 30, 2022, the candidate for reappointment is John Proudfoot. And there's a surprise, but anyway, the reappointment is John Proudfoot. Yes, Ms. Davis?
I move to appoint John Proudfoot until June 30, 2025, unless sooner revoked or a successor is appointed.
A second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Shell. Mr. Castro?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Shell?
Aye.
Mr. Metters?
Aye.
And the chair says aye as well. Cultural Council, two terms expiring June 30, 2022, the candidates for reappointment are Jackie Casey and Harry Howard. Mr. Metters?
Chair, I move to appoint Jackie Casey and Harry Howard to the Cultural Council until June 30, 2025, unless sooner revoked or a successor is appointed.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Metters, what say you?
Aye.
Mr. Shell?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Castro?
Aye.
And the chair says aye as well. We just want to take a pause in my shotgun approach to, or my, I should say, machine gun approach to appointments here, but to thank the following individuals for their service to the town. Just noting that they're coming off committees and really appreciate their service and thank them. Philip Kipbus, the Altidius Cove Committee. Huntley Harrison, Cable Advisory Committee. Huntley, thank you so much. Another 10 years, we'll be tapping you on the shoulder. David Special, Counsel on the Aging Board. Dr. Michael Thompson, Open Space Committee. Jill McDonald, Summer Residence Advisory Committee. George Cooper, Water and Sewer Advisory Committee. William Bill Doherty, Conservation Commission. Darren Saletta, Economic Development Committee. And Andrew Wade, Economic Development Committee. Again, thank you very much for your service to the town.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to ask Shauna a question. We have an additional person who's leaving a committee as of yesterday. Should we not thank that individual, or is it premature yet?
We had a resignation from the Water and Sewer Advisory Committee. That will be acknowledged in a letter to that member.
Okay. We should probably thank that person, though? Is it premature to thank him publicly?
You can if you wish.
Take away, Dean.
Yes, it's Ted Whitaker, who served on the Water and Sewer Advisory Committee, and he's leaving the committee, so we thank him for his service.
We certainly do. Thank you, Ted. Thank you very much. Okay. And now we have our Town Manager's Report, a lengthy missive full of good information. Jill, off to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So before you, in your packet, you have a current Town Manager's Report and a monthly report for the month of June. And we're getting back on the schedule of providing the monthly reports to the Select Board. Those that you haven't, the months where you haven't received them via the meeting, they are published directly to the website. So sometimes there's too much of a lag that we feel that the information is useful but somewhat outdated. Those that you haven't, the months where you haven't received them via the meeting, they are published directly to the website. So sometimes there's too much of a lag that we feel that the information is useful but somewhat outdated. So today presenting to you, interestingly, the employees' years of service for July. Many employees were hired in July, especially in the fire department. But I did want to note Ken Friend in our DPW, he's been with the town for 31 years. Mike Anderson, who took over as Police Chief on July 1st, has been with the town for 26 years. Andrew Goddard, Police Lieutenant, 25 years. Brian Gates, who's our Highway Foreman for 24 years. And then various longevity, starting with Gerard Smith as a Fire Lieutenant in the Fire Department for 22 years. And so just want to congratulate the employees for their dedication and their years of service, which is very much appreciated, and for their overall professionalism. So again, each month we'll have this report, which is the current report. And then along with the years of service, we also have new hires in June and July. And we have Richard Corris, who's in DPW, and he was promoted from Heavy Equipment Operator to be the Facilities Foreman. We have Nicholas Deland, who's our Community Center Building Supervisor. Jeremy Sinclair, Highway Division Heavy Equipment Operator. We have Jerome Kenlin, who you might know as a custodian, who's been promoted to Facilities Technician. And then new hires as well, they're all new hires, but Peter Henigan is probably one of the newer ones. Connie Lyman, who is in the Fire Department as the Administrative Assistant, but has done a lot of great work with the department administratively through the Senior Work-Off Program. You saw Lea Lacrosse tonight as the Director of Community Services. Christine McCarthy, she's the newest member to the Finance Division, which is the Collections Assistant position. And Brett Fortin started on Monday as a Transportation Gate Attendant. So welcome to employees and we're really excited to have you. In the report, I just noted a bio for Lea Lacrosse. We also highlighted her in the main sheet and she's working through the various boards and committees and town staff to meet with everybody. So she's been very active certainly with COA and Recreation Staff. And again, she'll be available as much as possible to meet the public. So we'll figure out a couple of events to do a meeting greet. And then the open meeting law, it's just that this came out, so we're allowed to waive the in-person quorum requirement until March 31st, 2023.
Three.
Oops, 2023. So it's basically status quo. There was some talk in the legislation about requiring hybrid meetings, but that was not included in the order that the governor signed. So having this remote platform, which we're prepared for in this room as well as the next room over in the small meeting room on the annex, we're able to have those hybrid meetings and working to expand the self-service rooms to do that as well in our other locations. And then today was a really great day. We, the town hosted the Seaport Economic Council. With that, we were awarded over a million dollars for the Fish Pier South Jog Project, those project construction improvements. So we're excited about that. And then following that meeting, we, still with the Lieutenant Governor present, we had our dredging grant awards. And so we were awarded a grant of $500,000. So a great day. The Team Chatham Natural Resources put the event together in collaboration with the Lieutenant Governor's Office. And we had a tent over at Old Mill Boatyard. It was a really great event with lunch. And it's just interesting, like this month, seven years ago, I think we were pitching the program to the Seaport Economic Council. And then the Lieutenant Governor was really excited to be here seven years later. And, you know, we were interrupted nicely by the commercial operations there and she seemed really taken to see the investment in use by the public. So that was exciting. And then at the, oh, I should say, Vice Chair Cory Metters was there as well, a select board member, Dean DeCastro. Mr. DeCastro was there for the entire time, the meeting, as well as the grant award. So thank you for being there for that. We sent letters to the seaside, I'm sorry, Seaside Links Golf Course Abudders at the request of the Golf Advisory Committee. And so this was, we thought was a gentle reminder that those property owners abutting the links to be aware of where their property line is so that there's no encroachment. And the encroachment has been few and far between, but when it's done, it's usually with mowing and there's a couple of fences that are on town property. So we're working individually. So one letter went out, was a reminder. Another letter went direct to those abudders that we felt were in violation. So we're working through that. And then a couple of other things, or another, you know, program concept that's come to fruition, the Dr. Florence Sullen Preschool Support Program. So we're accepting applications for that. Shawna has been working to get the menders certified and it's available. So this is for three and four-year-olds as of August 31st of the school year. And four-year-olds are entitled to a maximum of $10,000 per year for each four-year-old and $5,000 per year for each three-year-old. And this is paid directly to the license providers. And we're opening it up and hoping that we get a great response. We've had quite a few inquiries. And then Shawna is collaborating with the elementary school, Chatham Elementary School Principal, on translating our promotional materials and application into the various languages that the principal has observed spoken at the elementary school. And there's quite a few. So that will be published very soon. You might have noticed the food truck over at 549 Main Street, so that's part of our pilot program. And then up-to-date information can always be found on the main sheet and how to subscribe is listed in the report. So further in the report is all of the departments submitting for the month of June, and I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Select Board, any questions for Jill or comments? I've got a few. Mr. Metters.
Sure. Well, first of all, I want to thank you very much for this report. I find these things very, very beneficial to really, you know, for us, but also anyone in the public willing to take the time to go through this to kind of understand the inner workings of the town. So very, very, very much appreciate this. I just have two areas I just wanted to question about. Page eight, under Project Updates, Eldridge Garage Property, I very supportive of moving this thing forward. I don't want to harp on this one small element, but I do think for the board's benefit, for the pure mechanics of it, that the who's and what's of the gift, if this is the direction the town is going to take on that project, the who's and what's of that gift should be endorsed by the board. We should vote up or down. I mean, we accept benches, so if we're going to, sizable gift like this, I think we should acknowledge and kind of check that box off if that is the direction of the town wishes to take on that property. So I do think, you know, just putting the next step forward, in my opinion, that I think that's important, just to move this thing forward. And then the second area, I just wanted to...
Mr. Chair, if I could just...
Please, you'll go ahead.
So we've been in discussions with the trust who would be issuing the grant, which is the donation for the Eldridge Garage Project, including town council. So we've been back and forth. I think we have a tentative placeholder for next week's meeting. We're just waiting to hear back. So the intention is to bring it to the board for acceptance.
Good, good.
Thanks.
And then just more, from our curiosity, page 29, we got the department projects, activities, different various bullet points. Where are we on Crow Road intersection? I know Mr. Shell will love to get a discussion on a roadway project. So is that something we're going to see more in the fall or where does that thing, where does that conversation stand?
Yeah, so I'm checking off my list as well. And so I am working to convene a meeting with HSH, Howard Stein Hudson, who's the consultant for the project. And I've invited Jeff as the chair, as well as the Chair of the Bike Ways Committee, People with Disabilities Committee, Finance Committee Chair, and a few staff members, including Public Safety and DPW, to have a discussion of reviewing MassDOT's preliminary comments. And I wanted to get some feedback before we present it back to the select board. So we were looking to do that, I would imagine, after this meeting, probably in September. And I know that's exactly 12 months later than what we had originally promised. But I think there's some nuances that I'd like to get some feedback from the chairs before we present it to the board with a recommendation.
Okay. And then the last question, I'm not looking for an answer per se, but just something that should be on our radar, the feasibility study to reuse the Chatham Health and Swim Club. Have we kept up, if there's any changes with any abutting properties, easements, or anything that would have to change the scope of the RFP?
The RFP, if you don't mind me answering, Mr. Chair. So the RFP for the feasibility study for the swim club itself is targeted for that property. I haven't heard of other properties coming up for sale, but I did talk to the realtor for that property and he had said there's a lot of interest in it. And he didn't say exactly if the owner would be willing to keep it as a swim club or just sell it outright. So the RFP is to do the feasibility and we've been in contact and I believe that is due to be out, if it's not out already, it will be out this week. So just some nuances of having the owner allow us to enter the property or through our engineers, but I want to let the board know that there's been interest in potential buyers for that property.
Okay. Be careful how I want to ask this question. Has there been any changes to the property that we've been, my understanding is there's some easement issues that have been changed for abutting properties, that have changed the dynamics of that property or potentially changed the dynamics of the property? And have we kept in touch with that?
Let me look into it.
Okay, yeah, I don't want to get too much in the weeds, but yeah, just something we want to keep on our radar. Thank you.
Mr. DeCastro.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just some follow-up to the points that Cory was raising. First, with respect to the Eldridge, will we see the actual document?
Yes.
Okay. On Crow Road, maybe you said this and I didn't hear it, the group that you're putting together, is that going to, I know you said you were including the Chairman of the Finance Committee? What other committee chairs, or did you say other chairs?
Bike Ways Committee and the...
People with Disabilities.
People with Disabilities.
Okay. Were you going to include a representative from this board?
I did, the chairman.
Okay, great. The COA feasibility studies, are we close to bringing that to the board?
Yeah, so I'm looking to, so we're looking to have a single topic meeting on that and so I just need to connect with the Chair on that as well as the project team. Because one of the components that we thought would be useful is having some preliminary cost options included with the feasibility results. And I think those were expected to be done by mid to end next week. So we have a meeting on August 2nd and the next meeting after that is August 16th. And I just need to confirm if it could be that soon to present the feasibility study.
Okay. And lastly, on the swim club, and I'm not advocating the purchase, or not advocating the purchase, but I don't want us to be accused of letting the opportunity to acquire it slip because we didn't act fast enough. And I know it's summer and getting people to do things during the months of July and August is difficult, but the more we can speed along what you're trying to do on that, I think the beneficial, it would be beneficial for everybody.
Yeah, and the good news is that the realtor has experience working with municipalities. But I think it's that timeline, even if it comes back that it is feasible, it will require town meeting action and so forth.
Right, yeah.
So the realtor, as well as the owner, is aware of that.
Yeah. I'm just concerned that somebody, quote, scoop up that property before we have a chance to vet what we need to do. But that may happen anyway because the municipal process is slower than private processes. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Castro. I just have a couple, Jill, thanks so much for the report. As Cory noted, it's full of good information, useful information for folks who are interested in the workings of the town, the work of the town. I just want to thank you for the letters to the Seaside Link Abudders. That's been a cry on the Golf Advisory Committee for a while, so I'm glad to see that get adjudicated. Just wanted to comment and note on the, with respect to Renee's presentation this evening, the value of the shell fishing program here in the town. Just year-to-date, it's almost $650,000 with COHOGs being $408,000 of that. And that was through June. So anyway, we've yet to see July, August, September, et cetera. So incredible little, incredible little economic engine there that we do support in many ways. And I would hate to see it, you know, limited in some fashion by other powers that be. I wanted to note, the pumping for June, I think was very positive. It was a negative 21.3% less than what we pumped last year for water for '21. So I thought that was, that was really good and considerable. I know that July started a little heavy, but as one might expect, but saving $15,000, $15,748,000 gallons over last year, I think is significant. And I think that was all I had for comments. Oh, I had one request. I really like when you do the, you know, the years of service, but also the welcoming. But I'd love to have a net on, a net-net on how many, just a line item of how many open positions we have, open positions, and what are the most critical ones that you think we should be filling in. I know you and I had a discussion about housing for employees that we were losing out on excellent candidates because they cannot find a place to live. And it's a major issue. It is perhaps the number one issue. They cannot find a place to live. Mr. Shell.
If you're done.
Yeah, I'm done. Yeah.
First, thank you very much for this, particularly helpful for a rookie like myself. So thank you very much. Just one question. Can you give me just a little bit of detail about how the cost estimates that are going to be associated with the feasibility report on COA are being developed, the source and so forth, what the elements of them are?
So I haven't seen them yet. I know that in the past, we've used a cost estimator. So I don't know if they're going to apply cost per square foot to the cost or if they're going to put a weighted factor, cost of materials for, you know, if you were to build it today. So that will be information, I'll know, you know, in the next few days and then certainly when it's presented to the board. We'll have the owner's project manager, Rick Palmeroy, as well as the architect, Joel Barkman, be presenting as well.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Shell, they're going to do the best they can without having detailed plans